So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to those who are with us. And we will call the meeting to order for this evening. And please let the minutes show that our contact is in attendance, as well as members of our scene. We have guests with us to do presentations as well. So, welcome to everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Item three is approval of the agenda.
I know that the agenda will be accepted as it was presented for the May twenty-fifth meeting, seconded, answered, written.
Motion has been moved in, seconded. Any question on the motion? Hearing none of us in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item four is approval of the minutes of our prior meeting of January twenty.
Counselor Smith, the move to accept these minutes as presented, seconded, Counselor Walton.
Motion has been moved in, seconded. Any questions? I guess I have a question, should I be?
It is January twenty because we didn't have our February twenty committee, or it's always from the committee of the whole.
Okay.
We had a special.
Perfect, thank you. Any other question, comments? Hearing none of us in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item five is in regard to profit of interest, anyone this evening? Okay, we'll move on. The item six, and the sixth one is for the most bill in Canada. And Jean, if you'd like to, um, if that would be okay? Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. So, I'm gonna give an update more or less from very recent because things will probably be there in a fall, and then a couple of things happened, one of which was the court case with First Nations, that Crown land, that was already ongoing with the Rana Nupu chiefs. The Crown land is to be negotiated between the First Nations and the Crown. And they added industrial freehold for that. So, the licensees wanted to keep the negotiations happening just with individual freehold licensees and the First Nations. And the judge said that, you know, that the industrial freehold would be rolled into the Crown land and would be considered by the government, government of First Nations, not with the licensees. So, at some point early February, J.D. Irving, Pratt, and Pedro and Timber with Ford brought an injunction saying that they appealed that, they didn't, they didn't, it was a waiver for the industrial freehold being taken away from them in the negotiating table. Anyway, you could read all about it in the River Valley Sun, they cover these things quite well. And the judge agreed that industrial freehold for the time being would remain as part of the Crown land negotiation with First Nations, but the, the licensees had the right to appeal. So, the right to appeal has been granted, but the actual appeal of these things, you know, take about eight months to wind their way through the through the court system. So, we got a, we got a picture, some pictures in from the sledding, one of the sledding blocks to show that hand to the law, J.D. Irving is cutting up there on Breton Mountain, which is an industrial freehold, and it should be, they're cutting, they're cutting from the Juniper side through, they're cutting a roadway through to the Cala Croft area. So, now that's back with another First Nations injunction. I mean, of all of these things, we don't know what's going on, but the other aspect that's, that's interesting, or I found it interesting, is there are several other wind farms in the area, one in Glassville, or potential. One in Glassville, one in Beersdale, I think another one in Glassville, and all the new, uh, M.D. Power, request or proposals have to have First Nations at fifty-one percent ownership. So, those new wind farms, when I say new, there's, they're not in any, you know, they're in a state of becoming, let's say, they all have, most of them have Woodstock First Nation and the North Shore Ridmat Council. Two bodies that are not historic work well together. And if you go to any of their meetings, it's very rare to see a First Nations people, so, personally. So, these are all in process. So, in that process, so they have all got, they, they're in the sort of the queue of M.D. Power approvals. However, we've, we have been quite skillful at getting requests for information. And we wrote to M.D. Power, because as far as we could see, Irving does not have a power agreement with M.D. Power. So, we wrote to M.D. Power and eventually got back to the freedom of information that they have had, and we asked if we could have copies of all correspondence between J.B.I. and M.D. Power. There have been none. So, there's no power agreement for that bit, that operation that hopefully doesn't come to pass. Um, it's interesting, you know, whether, what the J.B. Irving's plans are up there exactly. I mean, you, you have to have a power agreement in Brunswick, you cannot just like, get going on your own, you know, that, that, that is not possible under the M.D. Power Government Electricity Act. So, the First Nations are making out of the court again. Whether that slows it down, I don't know. I, I would say that your attention as a municipality should be quite focused there, you know, these other wind farms are in Farther North, they've got their own issues there. And as I was telling, uh, this, like we see other day when I was here, quite a long time ago, maybe fifteen years ago, a wind farm wanted to situate itself on Garvey Mountain, which is another hillside in Knowlesville, and there weren't any people there, so it was non-controversial. And I was the contact person for them. And I argued at that time for a forty thousand dollar a year fund from the wind farm that would be managed properly, uh, could be for the community, the communities of Knowlesville, Glassville, and Juniper. And, well, that was fifteen years ago, the, the wind farm company, they make a lot of money, they were quite fine with that. But unfortunately, though, Arsenal and Juniper got into such a fight with each other over, you know, jurisdiction, and one, when maybe one would get more than the other, and anyway, the wind farm said that they, they would move away. So, now they are in Lamek. But what I'm saying to you is, it should be possible for you to argue that this is your territory, this is Heartland's territory. I, I have tried to get a little bit more action out of this table, I mean, have not been successful. I mean, I think you've listened to us. Jason's come out a couple of times, you know, side talks with us and that, but we haven't had any actual action. So, all the liability will fall on your shoulders if it comes to that. Already the sledders, the sledders are upset and snowmobilers because they were told by J.B. Irving that they would be able to sled up there, and now they've got stopped at the, you know, there won't be any sledding up there, or anything, it will be too dangerous. I mean, while construction's going on, that's years and years. Anyway. So, all of that to say, you know, I think it would be worthwhile, and I'm very happy to work with somebody on it, to send a letter in to whoever's the Crown land, I mean, we're wouldn't say that anybody responds to us, but I showed him a letter that I put in there. I mean, not even First Nations respond to us, they're organizations, and seeing as they have the most of the power in their hands, at least they're doing something. So, I would say that as a municipality, you should find out what's going on in all municipality and be a bit more, uh, proactive.
Thank you.
I don't know if we have any questions. I mean, we're also in the, you know, the, the aspect of glyphosate, so J.B. Irving already told us at one of the meetings that glyphosate would definitely be sprayed out there, which means that anybody that stands streaming, you know, while it is even in the health canon now to be reviewed, glyphosate has a policy for people and animals in water, so.
The, uh, the pictures that you have, Jean, and that's right above the pale into Howard Brook, uh, just trying to think, there were some hunting camps at one time, I think there's a sugarmate down below, like.
Tar roads is up there. Uh, I mean, there's lots of camps all the way along there, all the way from the Howard Brook end, there's camps.
Yeah.
Henderson.
Henderson's way.
Henderson, yeah.
They're not cutting down their own land, are they? That road's not on Irving land, is it?
Irving doesn't own land there. It's industrial freehold. They keep saying it's their land, but industrial freehold is not private property. They are the, you know, the whole thing with industrial freehold, I don't know the history, the history of it, was when the railroads first came here, the government allocated to the railroad a certain amount of industrial license so that they could, you know, develop around there. And then after that, the industrial licenses were given to the lumber companies so that they could guarantee wood supply, and then Irving tried to scoop up those, and did. But it isn't now with the, with the court case, industrial freehold has to be negotiated just with the Crown, it's not going with the with the industrial freehold. So, everybody has to get it out of their mind. Although Irving likes to put it in everybody's mind that it's their land, but it is not their land. But this is in the Brunswick, they seem to be cutting up there even though there's a court case against it. I mean, could you please, as the RCMP, I mean, is that your jurisdiction too, up there, could you, um, have a, go up the Howard Brook Road at least from this side and see what's going on and?
Yeah, which is not fair, what we would do when I see it.
Well, I don't know, you're the law enforcement people.
Yeah, so that'd be something I have to ask above me, like, that's not my general, a, a general duty, that's not my responsibility.
I'm saying it's your responsibility, but.
That's definitely something that we'd have to sit down and talk about, and I don't have any answer for that.
No, I'm not asking for an answer, but actually, I was quite impressed with your, you know, this thing that shows, like, everything that's going on. And actually, it's, you know, it's not really for me as a senior to keep goofing around that mountain, trying to get things to stop, it really is a legal thing. So, if we could leverage, I don't mind coming in and talking to whoever you would have to get permission from, but I'm asking.
So, Irving is asking, is gonna be asking for forgiveness instead of asking for permission?
Yeah, well. That's.
Well, but this is what the First Nations say, and I, I don't know enough about First Nations have a visceral hatred with J.B. Irving. It's a, it's a, you know, they don't mind negotiating with Aiden Mattewick, they don't mind negotiating with Pratt, they don't mind negotiating. And they think that Irving's cutting up there to push their buttons to see what connects. And it could be that, I don't, I really don't know.
Have you ever heard anything back from John here?
Nothing. I mean, the, the, you know, we did, we spent hours, like, we've got some good licenses on our committee. We spent hours inputting to the environmental assessment, you know, every single thing. And then, when the new government got in, in two days, the new minister signed off on that EIA. Put the writing.
I know I've seen several communication threads of, of the letters that have gone to the ministry, but I have not seen much of a response, so. That is.
I haven't seen much response, but I mean, that, you know, requires, you know, being on topic all the time. And, uh, you know, that's why I came here, you know, because you're another body that might help in some way, I mean, what we, we, now, so I think there's a.
Thank you for the update, Jean. Would you please, like, talk to your last?
I personally don't know if we would take a stance in this.
I'm saying, I'm not saying, like, no, we're not, I'm just, would you bring up your your next level?
I can give you my card and my email, and you can send me an email, and I can, I can talk to my superiors and see what they say.
Okay, that would be sort of roughly, thanks, Jean.
Thank you, Jean.
We will move to item six-two, and it's the, regarding department's library floor.
So, a letter from Board Chair Linda Boone was presented at the Finance and Infrastructure Committee meeting on March eighteenth, uh, where Linda and Library Manager Jeff Jones also attended. So, they were asking for, uh, support and assistance for an expansion to the existing Dr. Walter Chestnut Library Building or towards a new library building. The board will work on a needs assessment and funding proposal or plan, and we'll get back to the Finance and Infrastructure Committee in a few months.
Thank you for that update. Item six-third is Communities in Bloom.
So, you'll see, um, in the CAO report, uh, there was a lot of these, the Communities in Bloom, which is an annual competition with an enrollment fee that promotes beautification, civic pride, and environmental responsibility for community engagement. Uh, Heartland was the winner of this competition in nineteen ninety-nine. And the CAO was recommending that Heartland plan for that, um, in twenty twenty-six and call for a volunteer group to foster the project. Do you have anything to add?
I think we, we haven't reached the spectrum both as well, and I think that, um, that's something that we have certainly got at this year's forum in order to make the plans, so, so we can have your budget for that start here.
Did, uh, did you have a conversation with our current botanist?
No.
No, okay, because she and I were speaking this past week, uh, just kind of about where we, where we've been the last few years and paying someone to do the beautification as opposed to having a committee which we thought was hard a couple of years ago, so, um, maybe she should be somebody we.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Item six-four is ground search and rescue.
Uh, so there was a letter from the local ground search and rescue organization, uh, and they were looking for town land where they could, um, put a building. And there wasn't, they were actually looking for something between, um, Heartland and Woodstock on either one of five, or, I mean, three. Uh, but there weren't any municipally owned properties, and, um, the, uh, the other request that they had was for a tax, if there was a tax delinquent property, but the province is, as you folks know, the province actually handles that. Uh, for the municipalities, they do the, um, accounts receivable and that sort of thing, and so any deli, delinquent properties, they take care of that, so we really don't have any.
They don't want to be in town, they want to be outside of town.
Um, did it specify in the letter?
It said on the highway, yeah, second area. When they were high, we were on fire.
Highway, yeah.
If we would have anything, half of them anyway.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's what I said, we didn't have, um, any properties that would be suitable for that size, you know.
Thank you.
Typically, public notices given on any.
And they do it four times a year, and I usually try to post that on our Facebook page, um, when that comes up, so. I think there's one coming up in April, or there should be.
An outlay to a piece of property.
Uh, the tax sales, so the tax sale notices for the governor of New Brunswick, so it's the entire province, and they post them all at the same time.
Thank you.
Item six-five is our RCMP report, and Sergeant James Blant was with us this evening. Welcome.
Hi. And so, are you guys in front of you's a quarterly report? Um, this one, yeah, from ending twenty twenty-four, so I'll have one at the end of March, coming up, another new one. They've really done a good job, they break it down by area now, so you guys have a, just a sheet for yourself. Hundred ninety-six occurrences in the past, uh, three months of the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, as we had shown at the priority settings meeting the other day, um, pretty much everything is quite down, and I I give that kudos to us putting the right people in jail this time last year, so it's really made this quarter quite a bit better. Um, the right people are still in jail, like, for most of these property crimes and such, and that, I would say are probably mostly mailbox thefts. We had a, like, ramp up in mailbox mischiefs and thefts. The only person got put in jail, and they stopped, just like most of our other stuff, so.
Looks like pretty well, everything together.
Yeah, pretty much everything's down, and I'm not on wood. But, I mean, we now, we have our Community Crime Reduction Unit in full swing. Um, we're getting all the members from Mattewick here, so they're targeting things, I've talked to them every morning. If something comes up overnight, I go to them, they start hitting the road with it. So, mailbox theft, we're starting to liaise with Canada Post to get those fake boxes in and stuff, and they stopped. So, Canada Post needed them somewhere else, and they went somewhere else. Other than that, for you guys to go through. If you have any questions, let me know, but, um, the priorities have been set for this year, they didn't really change much from last year. Um, getting out of the community more, crime reduction, drug reduction, and traffic control. Pretty much what we're gonna be working on again, so. You guys, like, neighborhood watch and stuff, are you guys trying to get that going here? It's going really well in Richmond Corner, I don't know if you guys have spoken about that, have anybody interested in that, but it's going really well.
I don't think a recent conversation.
Yeah. Do you guys ever got that going, I would provide a member to kind of lead it with them? I think it's like a community-based thing, it's going really well in Richmond Corner.
Do they physically have some to drive around from the community?
No, they have like Facebook chats, and I have a member, I have a corporal assigned for Richmond Corner, and they're in the Facebook chat. Basically, community members put on here, there's somebody weird walking around. Here's the description, they'll contact Calvin, Calvin will either get my members to go, or they'll figure it out, hey, it's just somebody giving out pamphlets, don't worry about it. And if it seems to really draw the community together, it's really going well.
I see someone likes to paint their signs with.
Like crime stalkers, like?
Yeah.
So, if you wanted to do that, it'd have to be like the community of Heartland, or it could say, like, uh, the areas of, like, Howard Brook, that would be up to you.
Overdales.
Community-led, but we go and sit in on the meetings, and we're a point of contact, I'll assign one member for that.
I just know we had a meeting with you guys, was it last year, out at the Triple C, I don't know, I don't think you were there. But we had some concerned citizens about the, the cop, the the lines being torn down and stuff, and I'm just wondering if, uh, they'd be interested in doing something like that, having a correspondence through Facebook with each other.
Totally, you guys making that community base, you guys would have to start that up. Like, it's not something we can take on and get going from the ground, but if it does get going, I'd supply somebody for the meetings and be a point of contact.
So, would you have a, someone that we could reach out to?
Yes, the fire chief in Lake Line Bridges, the guy that runs home hardware, for example. He's your guy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to see how it gets started.
Yeah. It's just in fact, yeah, it seems to have brought the community together, their kind of worries have kind of gone away, and it seems to be working really well. Yeah.
Anything I'll ask, uh, unrelated to that? Why have the constituents have been complaining again, it's their type season at heart?
Yeah.
So, I usually get one every week, maybe two a week, of complaints, and what do I do, I can't chase them, the cops won't chase those.
No, we won't.
So, I guess the question is, is that what do we do as a community, is, is there a way that we could maybe have you guys go to the school, and they're talking about how, you know, we can't comfortably take the bikes, or maybe put a little figure in them? Um, it's just a nuisance.
I can look into it with our CPO to see if there is some sort of a presentation. It is a nuisance.
What to tell them?
I also don't know what to tell them, because I've, I've come in, I've actually found kids, they took off for me, I found where they live. I went to the parents, the parents yelled at me, and I I get into a situation that, you know, I might have a, uh, public complaint or such.
No, I understand.
It's, um, it's very frustrating. I was gonna talk about this, we do have a tactical traffic unit member being posted to Woodstock. So, if you do have troubled areas, I can send her there and be like, okay, can you go on under this area for a certain time? But they take off, they take off. I can't chase them, we don't chase two-wheel vehicles. A fourteen-year-old falls, scrapes his knee, I'm done, like. So, I'm not, and I don't know what to tell you to tell them. And the parents aren't helping. And yeah, the parents need to take the bikes away from their kids, when I go to them and say, your kid took off for me, there's nothing you can do with that. Unless, unless I stop them and ID them, if they have a helmet on, how do I ID them, how do I give them a ticket? The dirt bikes around here don't have licenses on them, like, they look back, they see us, they wait for us to chase them. Most of my guys don't even do it now, because they know better, and.
Yeah, we, I work in the school system, so we have reports of our bus drivers continually have kids pulling out in front of them and wheeling down the road while they're trying to, you know, briar through town and the kids. And the kids are the ones at risk, but they, they give us a description of the bike, and we do our best, but the reality is, as a school, what we do with our kids is they can't bring, uh, a two-wheel vehicle or an ATV or anything of the such unless it is licensed, insured, and road-ready for the, for the road. And, you know, that's where you get the street legal bikes that come in, but you can identify those because the license plate on them, and they have to be.
Is that provincial policy?
That's a, a school policy, um, that, that goes throughout our, our school districts, but they, they're not allowed to be on school property unless.
The law is up here, too, I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure what is being done at the school, but I suggested that last year when we talked about this, that the campaign be about education at the school, and it would be nice to use some members to maybe do a presentation, but also it would be, uh, I think forward-thinking on our part as a council, maybe have one of us from the town, or town or more, to be able to talk to the kids about what we're hoping for our community, right, the respect these that we want, because I know.
Are the rules different up here as they are in Cardinal North?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'd have to talk to the principal, but I know what our rules are, I don't allow snowmobiles to come to school either.
So, that's just, that's just up there, that isn't a whole district.
Well, there is, there are district guidelines around all frame vehicles on school properties, which should be a provincial, uh, mandate as well. So, it's just a matter of what are you trying to promote and encourage? But I think the other piece is, the kids understand what we're trying to create, we're talking about walking trails. You know, it's not fun to be on a bicycle or walking when they come by, and when they go by you, they immediately start to spin, throw the rocks on you. That's what they typically do, out of a sign of disrespect. So, I, I believe that this, our school here has, uh, a good history of teaching respect to the kids. There's going to be a couple outliers, like always, but I believe that if it was done with the right intention to get the kids, you know, focused on what we want as a township, I think you would probably have more success talking to them as a group of kids.
But there's a lack of respect from the kids, and it's, no, I can't, there's, it's one of the same in life. You, you find a kid, you just respectfully bring him to the parents, the parents give it right back to me, so it's very hard. Every once in a while, we find them, and we can tow a bike, sure, but.
Does the off-road vehicle enforcement have any more powers to chase?
We can't, you can't chase.
Like the off-road vehicle enforcement can't either?
Especially two-wheel vehicles.
So, here's a situation that nobody has an answer for. What do we, what do we do?
Well, it's always been a problem.
Yeah.
It's always been a problem, way back, I can remember.
I've literally been in Heartland with a bike that's been circling around.
But why can't we find a solution for it?
What if I do? If he falls and hurts himself, I'm gonna be liable, and then if I chase him and he hurts himself, I'm still liable.
The system is broken then.
Yes, and people are like, chase, 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 but then if we hurt, 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 then you're gonna change your mind and be like, I shouldn't have done that, then. It's, there's, there, there's no winning for me in this situation, the dirt bike situation, there's none.
I think the best thing we can do is educate, educate them, because no matter what, there's, if they're going to do it, they're going to do it, there's nothing you can do about it.
I think that back to Jason's point, or Counselor Smith's point, I should say. If we could get confirmation from the school that, that the regulation is the same, and then, I mean, if there was a dirt bike parked at school, let's face it, most of these.
There is a similar.
I know, most of these applications are, are these, they're, you know, probably not, maybe it is, we don't know that, but if there's a dirt bike parked at school, I mean, could we call the police and say, hey, come tow this, is that legal?
They're not allowed to bring them to keep them.
Well, no, but if there's one there.
And, and if, if it's a bike, then we can distinctly see this bike has been going up and down the main street in Heartland. It's got a specific sticker, it's got a specific color, it's got this, and we can go to the school, they're like, okay, that's the bike, everybody taking all of us.
Policy of no bikes.
No, no unflated bikes.
Well, that's the school policy, correct?
Okay, they can do that, they can do whatever they want on their property.
Yeah, it's the same.
We have always a kid that runs over. We have another kid that runs over by me that has a stashing bike, copying what the Canadian deal.
It's just like if somebody comes and parks in your driveway, you have to call tow truck and tow.
If you don't like social media, there's an increase in fraud, have you seen that locally? Can you describe some of these?
Like the, the, the grandparent frauds and those kind of things, like it's very like, the elderly, the proud elderly, um. No, we just, I mean, there are presentations that our CPO gave to the elderly and such, but I mean, it's still happening, it's always gonna happen.
I know Woodstock Police also do, Sean Kimball does. Courses and has them available for people that love to come to educate people about fraud.
We got Sonia Lappert to turn it, that also gives presentations all the time about that kind of stuff. Um, it's not something that's gonna go away, they're just finally ways of doing it.
I'm Wayne, by the way.
I didn't know that Sonia did that type of presentation.
Sonia will do those kind of presentations if I ask her, she's a very busy woman, so we try to, yeah. But I've been to tons of presentations with her, especially for things like we're saying about the dirt bikes and bullying, and no parents show up. No kids show up, it's kind of disheartening. We try our best in the schools, but nobody shows up. It's a lack of respect on all ends, I feel it too. But I, but I think we got body cams, like we spoke with the other, body cams are in, body cams are gonna be very, it's gonna change. Um, brings down public complaints, keeps people in line and my members in line, it's a great tool. Um, so we can let people know that they're on and you're recorded, so. It should.
You're doing a good job.
I have noticed in the last twelve months that I've noticed an increase. Of our C and P presence, even out Meyer, I live in Rockland, but I've noticed, I've noticed an increase.
In Rockland, it's good.
They're always out there.
We're very junior, we have a lot of recruits, I'm losing a lot of guys with senior. Some years on them, but we're getting recruits, but it's a learning pains.
But when you bring in somebody like Adam Graham, who knows the areas, he's awesome for this area because he knows everybody and he knows, he's great for the area.
Yep, and we're trying to get guys like Adam Graham, I'd love another ten out of Grahams, but other divisions aren't releasing their members either.
Right.
There's a staffing shortage, and then we get blocked, tons of guys wanna come back, it's just to get them back.
So they're allowed to come back?
A guy like Adam Graham, he did his service up north, neutral land and such, like he deserved to come back. So we have all these preposting agreements now, so you voted, you're going to depot, you can say, I want New Brunswick. And they'll post in New Brunswick, which is a nice thing, New Brunswick prefers to come back to New Brunswick, but. We're also not getting those guys with a ten year service that left for Alberta ten years ago and that wanted to come back. And now can't because we're giving all this foster recruits.
Yeah, one in B C, I love seeing that.
It took me twelve years to get back here, and I had to work hard to get here, so it's frustrating, but.
It's good to see local guys, so it is great.
We got Carson Kennedy, who's a local birth guy, who moves everything out of Graham, we have a few. Give it up, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Flann. Item seven, we'll move on to our ministry of reports, uh, seven one is with our treasurer.
Hard at fall. Uh, good evening, Mayor, awesome. Uh, in your package, you were seeing the treasury reports, we are. Reform to the end of February, so it's hard to predict the remainder of the year for sure, but I'll bring uh. To your attention just some things that I consider highlights. Uh, municipal capital board and board, so some things that we are looking at, some projects uh, that have been found out through the pipeline. One of course is uh, Route one oh five, our designated or partnership. He sent the one oh five on the Mallon Road down to uh, the end of the town limits. So we have just started, uh, Director Robertson is helping me and we are working our way through specifications. For what will be involved in that entire project, so uh, we have to uh. Like I said, give specs to uh. The P A, PMHP group, this is my first time doing this, so uh, we're, we're working our way through it. Uh, piece by piece, so once we have more information to report back, we certainly will. Uh, included in our uh, capital budget and in our uh, ask of DTI. For this project, it was a seven hundred thousand dollar ask with twenty five percent of money from us. So once we have a better scope of work, then we will be able to determine which piece of the puzzle we will be asking for in twenty twenty five. So we'll be getting back to on that one, the other piece uh, that possibly might end up.
Just if I could interrupt on the designated island. Um, previously. When it was called the designated island program, the government of the day indicated that. We were not going to receive any work in twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. And this addition for fiscal twenty five came out of.
So, not, I can't speak to the twenty three, twenty four piece. But what I can speak to is what I was told to apply for, so I was told to apply for twenty five and twenty six. And.
By whom?
By the previous C A O, uh, and. I, like I said, very new to the project and not knowing exactly what we were going to be into once this landed. So we received notification that we were funded in twenty twenty five. I missed it, because the conversations I was having with Sebastian Roy at the time of DTI. He said, you're, you're good for twenty six, don't, don't be concerned, you'll be good for twenty six. So we've had further conversations now that we're ready to move this forward. Uh, and we were getting ready for twenty twenty six. Then that's when we discovered, hey, this is gonna happen in twenty twenty five, and we are nowhere near. Project is going to actually cost, uh, and again, so. We are now doing our research, we are being told by the PMHP group, look, figure out what the scope of work is for the entire project. Put in what you can do in twenty twenty five and reapply for twenty seven, twenty eight. So that is where we're at today, because we're being told there is nothing in twenty twenty six, as of today.
So, we were talking earlier, is it possible for the town to go back to the Capitol Board again?
Yes, yeah, through the different projects, so what I have found out is. You can go to the municipal board, you, you're supposed to go once for a project. You can go back the second time, like we did with the complex. And you can even ask a third time, but at that point you are considered uh, in violation. So whether or not you get approved, uh, remain, would remain to be seen, so it's not like it's a once and. Done forever, but you wanna make sure you're only going project by project. Again, we have those uh, percentages that we have to live within. And all of these numbers have been included in our five year plan, they've been included in the debt profile that has gone. To the municipal board when we applied for a fire truck, so these numbers are already included.
I know, I know percentage wise, we're not many.
Okay, uh, so the second piece though would be an addition. Because nothing, uh, the se, if we decide that uh, we do need to replace our backup. And the plan for that does not work out that we had originally scoped out. What we originally thought that we would have a downer backup, and Jack can speak a little bit more to this in his report, I believe. Uh, anyway, uh, but the, the original used plan is not looking like it is going to be viable. So now we are looking at what are our alternatives for uh, a backup. Whether or not we can afford a new backup, those are things that we are trying to determine. And we put a timeframe on that to have it ready uh, for the next meeting to bring some better information to council. For better decision making and for sure, so those are two things that are coming down the pipe that we need to be aware of. One of them, we already knew, one is a bit more of a surprise with the, the backup and how that's turning out. Uh, fire truck purchase, we have issued the purchase order. Uh, we had uh, good round meetings with our fire department and their committee that was uh. Put in charge of uh, bringing this purchase order to life. All right, uh, so again, my first tender ever, we, we survived it, uh, and we were able to put a purchase order together under budget. So our budget for the project was five hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars and we issued a purchase order for five hundred and sixty five thousand, seven hundred and sixty. Dollars after much planning with the uh, the fire department. Thank you for including Julie and I, we learned a lot about valves and water. Uh, so just a couple notes on the financials up to February, hasn't been a nice winter, hasn't been a cooperative winter on weekends. Uh, so that has put us in some additional costs from the public works standpoint. Uh, we did have to replace the sander chain on the freight liner. And uh, basically, we are about twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars over budget, budget. For our winter costs so far. Uh, recreation, ice rentals, we're news, uh, twelve thousand dollars so far. But we are a little bit behind where we thought we might be with our uh, community room and fitness room rentals. But they are certainly, yeah, I'm seeing more than coming down through the pipe, so that's, that's all good. Uh, biggest thing with recreation uh, right now, supplies and power, power we've talked about. And uh, we did get some good news, our power bill that we received in March is, is down significantly. After a good weeking, uh, that has been done with our ice plant, so we are still working on some of those things. So that was good news, but overall, um, with supplies for the complex and our power, we are over. Eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars in of our budget. Uh, the complex itself, uh, forty three thousand, six hundred and forty dollar deficit. We knew we would be in a deficit situation for twenty twenty five, because our donations of course have slowed down. Uh, and we really do not know how we are going to manage. Twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five together to bring this, this uh, complex into uh. Into the capital side, so we'll move it out of operating and put it over on the capital side. We start our audit next week, we've had confirmation from our auditors that they will be starting next week with us. So we will be able to answer a few more of those questions, uh, and again, uh, we continue to fundraise. Have had some meetings and so we had an additional sixteen thousand dollars given just today, so. Uh, that's all good news and we'll keep moving forward to. How we can reduce that deficit to zero by the end of the year. That's better for it, if you happen to have the capitals.
Well, the seven hundred thousand you talked about at first, that's what the cost is gonna be for.
That's what we're approved for.
And twenty five percent of that is what, a hundred twenty five thousand, that would be ours?
Going to be ours, uh, out of that, so.
Do we need different financing for that?
Yes, so that's what we would be going to, uh. We have a lot of balls up in the air right now, we did submit our uh, CCBF funding or gas tax funding this week. And even while we were submitting it, uh, we were going through our twenty twenty five planning with Mr. Terrio. And uh, said, look, get ready, these are gonna change, so we have about three of those projects that right now. Uh, we are trying to get other funding for, which is good news. Uh, so if we can maneuver some other funding, uh, then. We may pull some dollars out of our gas tax that might be able to assist with that, but again, all of those decisions. There's way too many other pieces in the area to, to really come up with what the final plan will be. But we're trying to uh, make sure, at the worst case, the hundred and thirty five thousand is in the budgeted borrowing. And it is in the debt profile that we submitted earlier this year, so. We have set the stage, whether we actually finish the stage in the same manner, remains to be seen, so.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Tina.
Item seven two is our. Public works report with Jake Anderson.
I'm only gonna touch on the DTI meeting, you'll hear that through every report tonight. Uh, I just wanna say we had a, a very good meeting, uh, very informative. It was nice to meet uh, the, the director from the, see what his thoughts were on our area and. Uh, things I think went well, we, we've done a lot of late work since that meeting with him to uh. Hopefully better some things around here. Uh, cold patching, I want that, I'll let you tell him, I guess, uh, we are out, we have spread. Uh, we're spreading around a hundred and eighty nine bags so far, uh, we're getting another pallet on Thursday. Uh, we, we continually uh, gone out and see that at least the worst of them. Uh, March sixth was the heavy rain that we had here in the area. Uh, we've had a few issues where we washed out a few shoulders, so not as soon as the weather will operate, we'll be prepared. Uh, there will be some ditching and things that are going on target this summer due to that problem. Uh, for water and sewer, the Dylan report, uh, I'm ongoing with that, I'm in contact, uh. Few times a week, three times a week with Dominic, uh, and you have. The panel shop was here yesterday and today to. Sort of rework our computer system after legislation and annual gain, to help us get some information, uh. It'll, though it will be limited, uh, some more information to help support uh. The developments that are looking to go out to, up on Rockland Road. Uh, so far this year, we have dug two uh, water breaks, one being a service line, thirty nine hill press. Uh, one being a water main on Crescent Garden. Uh, I will say so far too, because I'm still searching for one, we actually have a company coming tomorrow. Do some leak detection, because we've been about a week and a half uh, of searching for this uh, leak with no. Result, uh, we have a few hydrants that we can hear, they're missing, so I'm only gonna ship them. Uh, equipment in them, so. Gonna listen a little closer and, and, and fine tune where we're at with, with any leaking. Uh, the library clock, um, I wanna highlight that tonight and give it to the public. It is down, I have received a couple complaints about that. The cable has broke that holds the weight for the box itself, not the chime, the chime, I'm still okay with the clock. The cable has snapped, uh, as soon as we can get at that, we're gonna get in there and. You know, it's gonna be a pretty good cable, she's a heavyweight, I, I started to pull it up out of the hole that it's in, luckily it didn't go. We can still get a hold of it to pull it up, it's gonna take a couple of us to pull. It's quite heavy, uh, the backhoe, I'm back and forth with the gentleman in P E I and Alpha Equipment, the dealer for J C D backhoes. Um, I got last week or the week before, I got confirmation that the transmissions were. Uh, not compatible. When I contacted the gentleman from P E I, it's something to sell, uh, he and I got talking and we found that. In our opinion, they were, were the same, so we went back to Alpha. I have to get uh, another serial number again tomorrow, I'll crawl underneath and get one off the transmission itself. That may still be in play, um, and he's got a couple other options that I have to bring to the finance and infrastructure committee. Uh, another machine that he'd be willing to work with us on, so. Uh, we have that to bring in the finance and infrastructure here with food. Free tube. Uh, the only other thing I'd like to highlight, so I'm just about to open up your time, is the heat ice plant probes and alarms. And the biggest thing I wanna highlight on this is, we had a, we had a meeting with Black and McDonald, our supplier of the ice plant. Uh, I was concerned about shutting off our plant. Uh, the end of this month due to uh, our. Our warranty runs out somewhere, I believe, mid October, first in November, so. We were shut off end of March, not start up until October, we'd be starting up just in time. So we were shut off end of March, not start up until October, we'd be starting up just in time for our warranty to run out, on out.
So the ice plant's only insured for, they're actually going for one year?
Correct.
A billion dollars sitting up there and it's only insured for one year?
Yeah, that's a dirty machine today, uh. However, uh, Blacky McDonald, to, to that point, plain, or short, I suppose, uh, to that point, Blacky McDonald, the, the representative that we've been in contact with, has stated that they know, we, we have an issue where it's not working to what the bird, the, the builder of the plant had, uh, expected to. So Blacky McDonald is going to stand behind anything and, and help us through. His words were, uh, I don't know if I should quote him on camera, but, uh, his, his words were, if it's two years from now, we're still working on it, we're here with you to, to make sure you see.
You got that in writing?
No.
Well, I'm sure, you gotta get that in writing.
That's what I haven't seen.
Was the ice coming out good?
Um, so we, we're shutting it down, uh, Sunday. It'll take about a week time, we melt out the drains, the mats, break the seal. Uh, and then it'll be about another week time we remove and clean up the floor and, and.
You don't take all the brine out of there, some do you?
Uh, there is no brine in this one, uh, it's all black and all, uh, no, all that, all that's there is. Okay, good. Last, what I'd like to highlight, if you have any questions, I have no problem answering anything else.
I just have one small item, uh, from the streets and roads section that, um, I noticed over the course of the winter that some of the new signs that we put in for the, uh, welcome to summer, little part of heart and etc. Are ju, are leaning quite bad, so I think it's probably just wrought iron in the ground or whatever and, um, would we have a plan perhaps to address some of those signs so that they're a little bit more integrous where they are?
Yes.
Okay.
We're, we're on that.
Okay.
Especially the one on Old Virgin. Also the floods, when it flooded down here, I see it damaged the guardrail, is that ours guardrail?
No, uh.
Or is that DTI's guardrail?
Where are you speaking from?
Down here past, down low, almost a mess, well, before, where, when across the road the ice come up. It damaged one of the guardrails, you can see it's all bent. That's full without, that's below, it's past, so it's past us.
It is past us, but that was damaged before the ice.
Oh, okay.
But that wasn't, the, the ice didn't actually come in contact with any guardrail, but I was down there as it was coming down, so.
Question, um, for the healthcare, this is necessarily your burden, but what's going on with the healthcare, maybe? That's the one, the hospital that burned it, there's a basement there, I guess, it comes a poor time and, as it happened, do we push the button and find out who owns it, land and it needs by sore?
I know, that is not my department, I must say, uh, but I, I do know, uh, former councillor Walton had been pressing that. Um, I don't know where that landed, I know he was, I don't know who the owner is. It was, it was in, it was owned by the bank the last he and I.
Yeah, so the bank should maybe be sent a letter saying, give them a deadline and make a neck person.
I could say that, but I don't know the properties.
Yeah. This one doesn't, it's, it's abandoned.
Right.
Without a home in a dangerous basement, the fake floor, so, so at least liability.
And if, and if it was water leaks that went on, protected because, not, should say unaffected, we knew, we knew we had leaks, right? Cause we lost our functions. Uh, it was a hard one to find, because nobody was there to say, hey, I've got water running in my basement.
Yeah.
Right, and we don't exactly.
So can we confirm or find out who the owner is and send them a nice nasty letter? Oh, bird.
Eight, yeah, at least eight years ago.
He works at credits.
I do have another question, Jen, I had them written down, I should have, I have to let them know, so. Just the, the runoff that's created up here, uh, between Tim Horton's and the park down below. That's quite a mess, comes through there and I see it's continually eroding further, um, which puts a guardrail in jeopardy as well. I'm just wondering if, if we've got some remediation plan for that, because it's washing down onto the trail. But, um, I've always thought there was a better point of access for ATVs and so on than right there. Cause that's probably creating some of the issue with that use of the, of that bar. And I don't know if that means that a guardrail needs to come down lower, further down the hill to help prevent that or remediate it. But that's, that's a, a concern, yeah.
No, uh, so we are in talks, DTI ourselves, uh, working on that guardrail.
Yeah.
Uh, so my hope is that it's removed, so we can clean everything, shake the shore. Right now, the problem with that erosion is caused by the shoulder behind the guardrail, it tires the road.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not allowing the water to run off and, and dissipate, so it's really, so, uh, my hope is that we do a wholesale, go at that, if we don't, then we got new B in there. But I'll know before construction, see what we're doing at that end, and look after.
Cause that impacts the walking trail on the park too.
Yep. That was a, that was a result of DTI stopping their ditching, um, and running many costs already.
Yeah.
So we went up and did the best we could to do.
Well, here's a good fact, I'd like to, for you gear guys to staff up with the new complex, how clean it's been, how well maintained it's been this year. It's been really a breath of fresh air and it's re, it looks really good up there. And it's, it has been all year, I've been up there many times for hockey and stuff and it's always, looks great.
I would give it back to Mr. Berniger, but just thank you, we, we have the ten of them, we're good. Yeah. Thank you very much, Ted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Our next report, so we're last meeting.
Um, everybody?
Hello?
Um, first off, I guess, thank you councillor Walton, um, and how you're doing, your effort for the new facility on the side of the equation. Uh, to treasure the focus point earlier, um, so the public's very, uh, increasing costs that we're seeing on the supply side. It is largely due to managing and maintaining and cleaning the facility. Um, the bathrooms, larger area leads to increasing cost, but, um, it's nice to hear that it shows and, uh, uh, all of our staff are very proud of the, uh, the helps. Um, getting into, into my authority, uh, I'll start, there's some highlights. So, um, after months and hours of training, we have done a soft launch through our ActiveNet program. Um, I say soft launch because as our town leadership goes through a little bit of transition period, um, we are tackling everything on the administrative side of things, so all the, um, uh, activity registration, facility rentals, we're gonna be planning to, you know, um, ball hockey coming up in April is going through the backend on ActiveNet and rationing receipts and invoices through that system. Um, once the customer portal comes out in time for, uh, some registration, people will be able to go online, create an account. And there's true for things like day camp and various programs online, some of the other areas of the side, so. Um, stay tuned for that announcement when the customer portal is live and has been launched. Um, plenty more of that. Uh, moving on, ball hockey, uh, ball hockey, if everything goes well and on track with, uh, the, um, the X coming out and cleanup, um, there is a youth tournament intentionally scheduled for April eighteenth to nineteenth.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
Are there lines painted on the floor? They're gonna have, they're going to be?
I'm just gonna be lined up, I'm just waiting on, uh, costing and, I don't mind.
Yeah, so I'm in contact with them, there's over, I think there's a hundred and ten people playing this year, the ball hockey.
I had that note, and so I was speaking with, with the organizer, and you guys are looking at potentially ten teams or more? Yeah, so that's, that's exciting, you know, it, you can, it's showing that the usage, um, for the arena goes beyond ice hockey now.
Because we're planning on two nights a week, but I think now it's gonna have to be three, yeah.
So very exciting, you know, I, I am happy to see that, that usage and that interest in me, I am certainly going to grow. Um, ice hockey side of things, we just recently had a, uh, not tweeting, more tournament, it was a success. Um, I don't know, had a great time, I liked playing the organizers and the teams for, um, just their own respect and appreciation of the facility, uh, six teams played and, uh, it was, it was a great tournament. Um, going on to the operational side of things, um, uh, some of you may know, and so the public's aware, we have, um, made our paint clean RFP public back of February nineteenth. You don't want to talk about that, it will be April first. And, um, on the topic of the canteen, I would like to personally thank the Huskies Row for their operation. Uh, since our last season at the barn and into the, uh, the new, the new community center, uh, they've done a fantastic job. And, uh, we just want to show appreciation for the work they have done up to this point. Uh, sometime this week and tonight, I'll be discussing vending options for the facility with CRO Stockford. And, uh, walking track, always very popular, um, we can see the, the user going to that, different, um, majors are coming in and going in, we have the regulars, we have new people. Um, the walking track is now going to be used, at least until the, uh, the field's dried up from the, um, the HCS track and field team. So they were here today for an hour for practice and it's really nice seeing them go, be there with their coaching, you know, um, using the facility and the track for some kind of purposes, right? Um, so it's been great. I believe there was a question, we were delayed there, um, unfolding in circumstance, uh, in regards to the sound system. And seeing if there was anything we can do to make the sound system, um, a little more clear, if there's a way to get out of speaker. Uh, I think that councillor Patterson will ask for that, plus, that's the information. So digging into that, um, the cost for an additional speaker would be approximately a thousand dollars plus taxes and labor. Um, save the cost of speaker, we did with all this little bit of an experiment and I worked with some of the announcers over at the city games. By tweaking the, the center cluster and the stands and isolating the two and just having that right mix, it does improve clarity both on the ice and on the outside. So it is, um, it's, it's a matter of training, it will allow us to save the cost of the additional speakers. Um, it is upgradable, so down the road, if there's, you know, purpose for that, then we can obviously look at it. Um, but right now it's for a matter of training, tweaking, and, uh, I did complete the job. Uh, director Dawson already touched on ice plant operations. Be on, uh, EMO update, providing the EMO update, I've already been in council in March of eleven. Uh, since then, I've attended the NBE EMO Riverwatch seminar in March of eighteen with members from many, many municipalities and from the fire department. Um, basically the purpose of this meeting was to just get everybody on the same page in terms of river watch and hazards and warning signs. Uh, NBE EMO has done, um, this is my first year in this role, but they would do a more active, um, taking a more active approach to river watching, my understanding, and, uh, their presence is more known, so they're driving along and checking things out themselves. They're monitoring leaders and fredding them and reporting on a, on a daily basis. And, uh, I myself have been in contact with our regional coordinator, um, on a regular basis. Especially long and happy, as you hear it, on the highway and, uh, it's basically going to see that, uh, that presence from NBE EMO, they, they are watching and they care about all of this thing. And, uh, staffing side of things, so I have a buy for, um, our summer student bands, as I've said earlier. Uh, we need to see more from our CEE application and, uh, we are leaving more from our ten to summer jobs, probably next month we'll be back.
What are the ages for the, for applicants to apply, like, what are, is it the cutoff, is it like a high school age?
Depends on the program, but I do understand that we would see have to be in the school, um, whether it's post-secondary or, um, or high school. Um, and then I think ten to summer jobs, you have to reach, and I have to ask, I don't know if they just cut off for nine years, but, um, I'm not sure at this point.
Uh, canteen, how often is that gonna be open now, like, for the ice thing of?
Uh, well, until you choose select a new canteen operator.
That hasn't been done yet, has it?
No, I will be running the options on April eighth.
Okay. Is this winter's?
Yes, good.
I do believe that they are, they'll be open this weekend, won't they?
We are.
Skate with the provincial.
Huskies Row is finally being opened this Friday. Don't ask me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. Next, we have our communications, I have our reports and things up here.
So, over the last month, um, the big thing lately is the municipal by-election. So as you know, the nomination's closed last Friday and we did have two people, um, come forward with their names. So Stephanie Foster and George Boone, uh, there will be an election to choose one of those for Ward Two council seat. So it is just the residents who live in Ward Two who will be voting in that election. So that is the former town of Heartland, uh, Coldstream and Uber Town Road, that general area.
And the Baptist Church is gonna be the place to go to vote.
So the Baptist Church and the WI, so I'll get to that in a second, that on Election Day on April fourteenth. So, um, yeah, so only the, uh, only the Ward Two residents will vote in that by-election. The advanced poll is Saturday, April fifth, from ten AM to eight PM, and I believe that one is at the Heartland Baptist Church. Um, and then on Election Day, Monday, April fourteenth, it is at Heartland Baptist Church and the WI Hall in Coldstream. Then Declaration Day will be April sixteenth, um, there's a deadline for application for recount, that's April twenty-fourth. Um, so if there isn't a need for a recount or isn't an application submitted for a recount, um, the returning officer will tell us on April twenty-fifth who's been selected. And anytime after that, whether we, um, schedule a special council meeting to, uh, for the swearing-in or whether it waits until the April eighth, uh, count, uh, pardon me, the May, eleventh council meeting. Um, we can determine that at that point, but that's how that will work. Then, uh, under community development, I did wanna mention, so Heartland helpers had asked if we could get more of the NB Power energy kits for their seventy households that they support. And we reached out to NB Power and they said, this is exactly, um, the group of people that we want to be able to help with these kits. So they put seventy of them together and they shipped them up the next week, so, uh.
Very cute.
And they picked them up, oh, perfect, okay, so they'll be getting those out, uh, to their clients.
Thank you to both Heartland helpers and to NB Power for making that happen, that's a great.
Those are great kits, too, there's lots of useful things there. Uh, the newsletter, I did include a copy that I printed in house here, um, of the, the new newsletter. So I just picked up the actual copies from, uh, the printer. And I will be sending those out, I'll be taking them in the boost office this Friday so that they can start getting them out next week. So folks will see those in their mail. And I have now started on the next newsletter already, I had a meeting today, uh, with the CRO on that. So we've got some ideas for the next one. Uh, under grants and funding, I wanted to give you an update, there were two items on that list that said we were waiting for confirmation. We received two confirmations today and I rushed the paperwork right over to the mayor's office that she was able to sign. So that is for our twenty twenty-four RDC expenses. So we received eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars for that and that also included, um, we added, uh, nine thousand dollars onto the original application. Uh, because we had already spent for the Glenn Group for some of the, um, preliminary work on the waterfront project. So RDC had said, why don't we put those in because that application's taking longer than they thought. So they said, to make sure you get your money back, why don't we, or to get it back quicker, we'll put it in this application. Um, so that number's a little bigger than anticipated, but that's why. And then we also got the confirmation for the arena demolition from RDC. They've given us seventy-four thousand dollars to go towards that, so that's some good news.
I applaud your persistence.
Um, now they also did tell us that our pre-construction, um, application has also been confirmed. I do not have that letter of offer in my hand, but I do have it in writing in an email. So we are working on the next steps. so we are working on the next steps to move forward with that, with the developer who's looking near the pool in that area. So I did send an email on that, so we're hoping to get that rolling. Then, on the downtown waterfront revitalization project, so we had to go back, part of the process, Akawa required us to have our Wawa permit, so that's the Wetland and Water Course Alteration Permit, and so we had to do some extra work on that. And they, we submitted that, I should say, the Glenn Group submitted that for us and the Wawa folks came back and said we needed to have letters of consent from the property owners. So we sent those forms to NB Power and to the Baptist Church Board. And so they, the, the dates have changed since what you're reading in your report, so the church is going to be meeting Wednesday, tomorrow, for their board meeting and NB Powers meeting got bumped. It sounded like they were going to reschedule next week, but I don't think it's for next week, I think next week they're going to reschedule, all the people will be back who need to be at that meeting. So hopefully we'll get that moving, however, the election has been called federally, so really our Akawa application is going to be sitting in limbo even if we can get it submitted tomorrow, so. Under planning and development, there were no building or development permits issued in the month of February. And under tourism, actually, I had the Hatfields on, but I think we're going to be discussing that specifically later on, so I'll leave it at that for my report. Were there any questions?
No, but thank yous. Okay, we want to move on to our first people. Just again, if you wanted to share something, we have the CIO, but I have a large one.
Oh, no, on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Third report is for councils' purposes.
Okay.
The only, the only question I might have, and I apologize, is just a combination between John's report and Michelle's, and it's an item that is kind of connected to both, in relation to the trail work gone that was referenced in your report. I know we had talked about exploring off the Transcan Trail for funding, and I remember that in that funding application, you can get infrastructure built, like culverts and access points for your trails. And you mentioned that there would be a walking trail in there and that we would have the opportunity to, to set a portion of the trail as walking and so on, some kind of negotiations. I just wanted to kind of bring that up again, that it would be important to identify those key access points, that there's some low points in the roads that just need a little bit of gravel and a culvert. It's not a lot of money, but it's just another plug that this could happen quite quickly with Trail Association and with Transcan Trail, and there are some grants available for that, so just want to kind of jog around that again.
Okay, so then on to our CIO report, so your first thing you learned from the second issue.
I'm just some pickings, because everybody highlighted all the good stuff. Road maintenance to Jed's point, we're making progress and getting some folks to pay him, so that's a great thing. We had a meeting with the library to find out where that project is moving. Public safety, as Tina has noted, the treasure room, we came in member budget and sent the EO purchase order off for only five. John already mentioned the AFTENET, but we are in a soft launch on that and I'm hoping to be able to use that in the future for other events as well. Green initiatives, myself and Jed have a meeting next week with the Knowlesville Art School, they want to come do some tree planting, so we're gonna, we're gonna see what's a good place to have that. Maintenance backlog, we've already addressed that, the variable issue at Thames has been addressed and left in the works. Our fire marshal approval for the complex, we have four outstanding items left to get that completed and there is just one person that has those four items, so I'll be reaching out to make sure those get done later, so we can get that, that approval done really well. It's for the widget.
Are those, are those the four items, are those four environmental related to the ability to host the events this summer?
Any questions for us in the air? Last report is a fire report, we have input invited to for me.
Thank you for that's provided. I was going to say that, but. You teach in my class, holy cow, that's a new one.
Meet everybody. February was kind of a little slow month with the, with the doing, with the, with that for the new structure projects, we had to put a lot of hours on. And the Noel Log was up to their newly schooled and the medical assist, like to kind of put a Noel on that. My class, ever since, let's be honest, we never used to go through medical assist. Mike didn't think that was really what things do, but we put work on cardiac arrest. So now, the officers, we got together and we said, okay, we should go to the medical assist. Everybody up down the valley does the very same thing. And so we, the officers got together and we decided we'll split the names of the department in half. And like one month, a group of people will take that month and the next month, a group of people will take this month. And now cutting down the, the number of people coming to the hall. And usually like the medical assist, you'd only get like five people in the truck anyway. So then we decided to do that and, and I told the guys, if you're not on that month and if you come to the hall, you're not going to get paid. Yes.
Define medical assist.
It's when they have two paramedics on, on site and everything, and then like if the person is overweight, the two paramedics cannot be lifted, they're got on the stretcher.
So a medic, so the fire department is assisting the ambulance?
Yes, that's how we do it.
Is that the only sort of circumstance where we would go?
No, there's, I was like a cardiac arrest, that's an emergency. And we, I was talking to, who was it, Joe? And he's, I asked him, I said, can we have like a, when the call comes over, like priority one or priority two? Because like priority one, you'd go hot, that means the side, if you go on lights going like that, for medical assist, we just get, the trucking, not going down, yes. And he said, he would look into that. And I think it's, right now it's, it's working pretty good and it'll keep the cost down, where people are, they go and then they sit there and get paid for it.
So when did, when did this start, or has it always been this way?
When we didn't go for medical assist?
Right.
Yes, been for a long time. And we, we thought as an department and everything, we should assist everyone, of a medical deal too, they'll say they help us.
So, so the ambulance has the authority to instruct you to, to what?
They do, they, they call 459 and then 459 calls us. And they knew like there's times like when they, they didn't need their assistance and they call 459, call, call us, then they'll put a cancellation page, so for, you know, we entered the.
So if I understand this correctly, so when former chief was on, you guys didn't respond to medical assist?
No, we, we did a few times.
I was just wondering what they would do, like what would the ambulance have done in those situations if they had somebody they would need to assist with before you guys did?
It, he tried to go down and talk to 459, he said, medical assist, we don't know whatsoever. But sometimes we didn't get a call, then we went. And we went back to 459 and said, yeah, tell them that, we don't do that, just on cardiac arrest. That's what like, you gotta have a paramedic working on the patient and you want to get one paramedic there in the fit list, and we've always done that. But then, I've been talking to some of the paramedics and they said, we're the only department that didn't do it, so we're just kind of trying to work with them and keep the cost down at the same time.
I know, I experienced a situation within our workplace environment where we could not fit a stretcher into our lift at the school, because they're bound now, they're just a lift and there's just not enough space for the length of the beds. So to come off the second floor of the school, it required some additional assistance and it wouldn't have been a person with too much weight capacity, simply an awkward carry down along a set of steps. And my staff were not permitted to assist the, the, the paramedics indicated that that's what they had to do was the call out, so it did require a couple of additional folks to carry that, that bed down the, down the steps, yeah.
So the last medical assist we had, the patient was over 300 pounds.
Yeah.
And a group of people went out and then.
That's a good thing, because I've been involved in a lot of cases where I wish you guys would have been around to help me. So, I'd, it's a good thing.
So, you know, I just come to you, you know, a bunch of hosts, knowing we're trying to go with everybody at the department and just one more thing, I've been looking forward to seeing everybody Saturday morning at the breakfast.
On a Saturday, I think.
Saturday morning, yeah.
Oh, at six o'clock, though, eh?
No, we change that out, so.
God bless you.
That's a reasonable.
You've got places to be on Saturday.
Seven to eleven, because there've been times, like at six, we would be eaten that day and then after a while, like slowly come in at like seven o'clock. Then at times, we'd run 10 o'clock, people would show up, so we're just kind of just set it back a little bit, just to eat everybody.
Do you have a pancake maker in the shape of a fire truck for you?
I'll ask Freddie if he can get one.
Question I have, in my many trips up during the night, I have to look out the window one night last week and there were at least four vehicles over here in front of the mall. Were they fire vehicles or RCMP?
They were, they were us.
What was going on?
They, the courtyard, the alarm went and I don't, there was a sprinkler, well, it was, it was an alarm, it was sprinkler, it was losing water pressure and that alarm went off. And Alton got the sprinkler, I don't think it was lighting up in the book, and Jed probably knows more about that, so.
I was speaking to Alton, they didn't get the faulty valve and their sprinkler system defeats their act, so it must fall directly.
Because I was wondering, I thought the end had fallen off the covered bridge for Pete's sake.
Speak on that, but yeah. Yeah, thank you.
We will now move into the rest of your business, item 81 is to review the draft proper maintenance, whether it's various lands policy. So, councilwoman.
Has been sent, public health policy.
Okay.
Councilwoman, you will draft, who gave us a request for proclamation, lightups of municipal buildings, display of their memorisations, raising of the flags.
So we've had this come up before, different organizations and groups asking us to either have a flag or do the lightups and that sort of thing, and we've tried to work on a policy that would bring us to an agreement in relation to volunteers that come through. So while we haven't come up with a real resolution yet, we did provide a couple of motions here to either add it to our agenda for the next meeting or to have staff investigate, maybe what other municipalities do and see if there seems to be a common denominator throughout municipalities in how they handle these things. So those are the two motions that we've set forward, but you know, we can certainly discuss it further if you'd like.
Policy statement. That, reading that, that implies that if a veterans organization or the Royal Canadian Legion approached the town of Heartland with regard to Remembrance Day or Veterans Week, that we would not participate, not having to think that would be shameful.
But we do, that's clarified on the procedural piece on page two, that that exists, we have an exception, yeah, that's okay, that's an exception that was provided.
Right.
And the other thing is that while we may not do anything specifically as a municipality in regards to a, a display of sorts, it doesn't mean that we can't, you know, promote it in other ways, you know, if private citizens wanted to do some sort of mail-in thing on and on. It's not that we're not giving validation to the press, but more to have an established policy in how we handle them. So we put someone, put forward a motion, one of those two, a max.
It's a motion to add the proclamations, light up, and flag policy to the next regular council meeting agenda.
Or to have staff further investigate.
Well, to put the first motion through, it goes through as it is presented to us tonight.
It would be added, this particular policy would be added to our next meeting.
So moved by Councilwoman Britton.
Seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions on the last thing?
The only question I have is in response to the provincial flag, the off-the-flag protocols for the promised project does allow for certain example, certain flags, for example, to be phoned from that flag pole as acceptable procedure, but you have to apply. I'm just wondering if in this, as a municipality, do we have any, sorry word, any obligation to process any requests through the off-the-flag protocols, or is that our discretion?
Well, I, I, I looked at item number six on there, we can amend this at any time we wish, if anything comes along that we feel should be acknowledged.
I have a question, have you been able to reach out to any neighboring municipalities? I suggested reaching out to Woodstock, have you had the opportunity to do that? It might be my suggestion that we do that because there had been something come up last year and I know that Woodstock have worked quite deeply on a policy.
Would you rather I amend my motion?
That would be up to you, but it would be my suggestion that we maybe do a little further investigation as to what our neighboring communities have done and see, you know, what their priorities and why they approached it the way they did.
I would amend my motion to have the staff further investigate it before it comes up for final approval at our next council meeting.
Seconded.
Motion has been amended, moved and seconded, sorry, who seconded, okay. Is there any question on that motion?
Well, it might be a point of information rather than a question. Uh, it's my understanding currently that if, at the discretion of any institution or municipality, it depends on the number of flag poles that you have, what you probably choose to do. Um, so if we only have two flag poles, then the two standards would probably be what you would go with. If we had three, you would then use your third flag pole for, uh, a town heartland flag per se, or any other flag that you wish to, to run up a flag pole. But that's just something to consider too, in thinking about the policy that, um, I think that's probably what other municipalities have done. If I'm, if I'm being transparent, is they have put a third flag pole in to help with the, uh, when we talk of neutrality or the fairness of what is, what is erected. Do we currently have one?
We have two. Currently.
One is down, yeah, same as, uh, what I have at school. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? There are none of them, favor, raise your hand. Thanks, Karen. Item eight two is in regard to age friendly communities.
Uh, so the H friendly community initiative is encouraging municipalities to form community led committees with at least one member of council to assess the needs of the aging community and create an action plan to implement changes. Uh, this item was reviewed at the January fourteenth regular council meeting and determined whether the discussion should happen once the C A O is stopped.
Yes, but you written all over it, Council Britain.
I ain't gonna touch that with a ten foot pole.
So there is a note there that says that if council wants to take under advisement for consideration in the twenty twenty six budget, no motion would need to be made.
And I should say, there were some additional comments in the clerk report that was provided for the second page of the clerk report is item eight, eight two. And it does have some information that was provided from the C A O's report.
That's something that I've been, I've been. Uh, so it says, um, reviewed by N B H friendly community recognition program. And feel this is something that municipalities should add to our strategic plan. Council would move the pass a resolution to actively support and promote the program. And then advisory committee would need to be formed and a community assessment completed. So in reading, says she would reach out to other communities to see, um, the process that gone through to gather that information.
I think it's important, you know, I, I feel like I'm juggling a lot, but like I do feel like it's. I know, I'm just saying, I think it's an important thing to consider with the demographic of, of our citizens. But I, you know, to have to commit one of us towards that, I, is hard because of what we already juggled. But, um, I'll see, see the value in it for sure.
I thought you were gonna.
Ball here.
Motion to stick the old guy on it.
Well, no, no, but I, you know, I mean, like, you know, I'm proud of fifty here this year. Um, and, uh, I know, right? Like just a young fellow, but at the end of the day, you know, you do look at things like, uh, we consider a walking track. And I've met with a number of members of our community on their needs and wishes as it pertains to the activities that they would like to participate in, right? And, uh, and we do see an aging population is more physically active than they ever have been. You can just look at, look at the pickleball group that comes out every Sunday. And, uh, and that's mainly people over the age of forty to fifty, truthfully.
I'd say ninety-five percent of that walking track is used by people over fifty years of age.
So I, I would say that in a, you know, even from a, a lens of what we do in recreation, sports recreation, um, how might, how might the things that we do as a, you know, supporting our, our aging population, our age friendly environment, there's probably Samaritan taking a hard look at this even from, from the lens of sports and recreation. So I can't say that I could, you know, commit fully on my own, but it could become part of something that, uh, Sam and I looked after maybe together jointly, I don't want to throw you at it, but at the end of the day, it could fit very well in our portfolio of things that we examine.
Would you have something to add, Juan?
It does say that the committee should include seniors, other community members, uh, representatives, senior local businesses, and then it says include a municipal councillor or a staff member. And we do actually have a few things, there's eight domains that you have to meet in order to qualify. Uh, at the two that we're lacking in is transportation and civil participation and civic participation and employment. We have housing undergo, we have lots of social participation, we have groups, like you said, with, um, recreation of a hospital. So we need some of them, we need four out of eight.
We have, you have to meet all eight?
Um. The domains is. We should address.
It's definitely going to take, yeah, more, more research and, and I, I think that once we establish what is required, I think, I think optimistically, that there would be more than a few people who'd be interested in it, so.
And if transportation's an issue, we can always start a rickshaw business across the bridge when we're ready to travel back and forth.
You're always, you always have such great ideas, thank you for contributing.
I need to be more active.
Um, all right, so, um, we, we can just leave that, um, for the C A O to do some investigation.
Would you want to make a motion to have staff further investigate?
Uh, well, it's, um.
Well, that would be what we're doing, right? So. Council Smith would make motion to further investigate topics initiative and bring it back to the next committee of the whole.
Seconded, Council Britain.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Hearing that, now, those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. We want to item eight three, there are two passes on. I think that motion.
Yes, taking it, it's okay. Um, so the, um, the province's regional development corporation have advised that they cannot approve our downtown waterfront revitalization project until the Federal Atlantic Opportunities Agency, um, have agreed to support it. So, um, as I mentioned earlier, we have to go through the Wawa permit and get that first before a COA will look at it. So that slowed that down, um, and then the federal election is going to delay that further. Um, so the C A O looked into it and it is within her spending authority in the town's procurement policy. And so she gave the approval, um, to go ahead with the repairs and that request has already been submitted. Uh, so that's all taken care of. Or in the works at least.
Thank you. So the date of our next meetings, April eighth will be our regular council meeting here, six thirty. And April twenty second, uh, will be our committee of the whole room.
Which is Earth's Day.
So?
April twenty second is Earth's Day, so it's a celebration meeting. And the teams will be, I don't think it's like that.
Before we move to, um, to adjournments.
To go.
Is any, did anyone get to the provincials for the hockey this evening?
I watched them. I did, I was down for many teams, but could see bits and pieces of all the games, less the final.
So I believe that this is the first hockey banner that's come to back to us. So congratulations to the Heartland Huskies and, uh, all the team members.
Kept us on the edge of our seats for sure. Coming back kids all weekend.
The community support that was in that facility in Fredericton was unbelievable. It was, it was gratifying to see so many people from Heartland and surrounding communities be there cheering them on and supporting them and very emotional game over time back and forth. And, uh, yeah, it was, uh, nice to see it.
It's an impression to all those involved with that.
Year worship, is it, um, okay to bring up one more item before we adjourn? And that's, it's the covered bridge or should that be, uh, closed section?
That was raised in the report, is it about memes?
I don't know. It was in the report that, uh, about the social media. And they were just, they did a, I think it was a survey or they, whatever it was. But, uh, yeah, it's been, I, it was talked about in the, well.
So it's in there already, so it can be discussed.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is this in one of our reports? Um, it, you know, it was.
I think it was in mine and it might've been in Jen's from the meeting as well.
And I'm referring to the, uh, the new additions that they put on both ends on the bridge.
Well, the public, as, as it says in the thing, the public agrees that they're an eyesore, but they know that they're needed. And they hope that the town will do something to spruce them up. So I guess we're gonna be left, right? There's nothing we can do that.
No, I don't, I think for the safety, um, for the prolonged, prolonged life of the bridge, uh, they are needed.
They've been on there before.
Yeah.
I think it's.
I, we're, we've spoken with them about a couple of potential plans, um, and that's still to be determined, but I, if I have to take a roller up myself.
But I think it's good for the public to know that we, that it's not the town, the public needs to know that it's not the town that okayed this, that wanted this, heading, this is a D T I. Cause a lot of people misinterpret and think that we are the ones that asked for this. I think the public should know it's a D T I.
Would have been nice if we'd been informed.
Or asked how to do it, or is there another, another alternative that is not such a, uh, a monstrosity that, that takes away from the visual aesthetics of the bridge and the, like, it really does. Or I, I, I still can't believe there's not another way to reduce the flow of traffic into the structure without doing what they did.
Well, people obviously aren't reading signs or listening to signs. And for the prolonged, if we want the bridge to be there in the next five years, something needed to be done to limit the weight restrictions and the height restrictions on the bridge, or we wouldn't have a bridge.
Yes, I'm sure I wanted to add something.
Um, so in the discussion today with the C A O to go through for our newsletter ideas for the next newsletter, uh, because this had come up previously and I think we were two days away from sending it to the printer. So it was too late to get it in that one, but it is on the list to do an article in our newsletter. Now, it doesn't get distributed until July, um, but it would give us an opportunity to explain the process. We are working behind the scenes on coming up with some different ideas on how, um, we could lessen the visual impact.
The eye burden?
Um, so we are talking about that, but honestly, it's, it's going to command a budget as well, just like a lot of the initiatives, um, new initiatives that were discussed tonight. It, it is going to, budget is going to have to be a consideration, um, and if we can come up with some, I think is great, but we don't have it in the budget this year, maybe we can plan for that and council could consider it for something to include in next year's budget. And maybe we could get some funding to go along with it because we have those meetings as well this week. And, um, the organization we've met with is open to helping us with some funding, um, on improving the looks.
But even in the meantime, are we allowed to do anything to it?
Paint.
We're allowed to paint it? That's it.
And how to adorn it, any men?
Would you want to draw more attention to it?
Why couldn't you put a sign on it, on top of it, like Heartland, welcome to Heartland? Kind of thing.
My.
I'm not sure, sorry.
Underneath, no, no, it's fine, no.
And anything that you don't want to see, you make it disappear. So in order to make it disappear, this is just my thought, you paint it a very similar color to its background, whether it's the concrete, uh, around it or the color of the bridge or something where it just blends as opposed to stains. And, and I personally would not hang anything from it, draw attention to it. I would make it blend and disappear. That's my thought, so.
I know, what I'd do to it, but it would make it rust.
On that note, would you like to motion to.
Uh, I, I move to adjourn.
To a closed session.
To a, to a closed session.
For me?
To.
I move that we move to closed session.
Thank you.
Council Smith will second that.
Motion has been moved, and seconded, all those in favor?
Okay.
Motion is.
Well, they.